Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the city council meeting of the 12th of October 2016. Bienvenue à la conseil municipale de la ville d'Autreuil pour le 12 octobre 2016. If those of you who are able to can please stand for a moment of reflection and remain standing for the national anthem. We'll ask councillor Middick to introduce our special guest. On avait des invités très spéciaux de l'école Prélude.
Merci Monsieur Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The Harmony de la Cœur de Prélude. This choir is new, but the school started the instrumental ensemble in 2000, and as you can see, they're ready to rock. And there are 17 members accompanied by one of our contents. The students are between grade four and grade six. And over the years, the school band has won many awards in the regional competition at the national level.
Thank you very much. Merci beaucoup à les étudiants de la Prélude.
To the students of the Prélude.
You have to carry the biggest piece of equipment around, but you sounded great. So thank you, councillor Middick, for inviting our friends from La Prélude. At this time, I'd like to invite Frances Kane and Louise Staranetzek to the podium for this meeting's City Builder Award. And invite councillors Michael Kakish, Keith Egley, and Jan Harder to join us. So ladies, if you'd like to come over here, welcome.
And I'd like to invite the councillors, Michael Kakish, Keith Egley, and Jan Harder to join us.
Although seeking no acknowledgement, Frances and Louise, many contributions to Carlton Lodge's long-term care facility have earned recognition from residents, visitors, and passersby. For over four years, these two ladies have been the driving force behind the rejuvenation of the now beautiful and vibrant gardens that surround the facility. These two tireless individuals can be seen sometimes seven days a week working their magic in the garden.
These two tireless ladies can be seen sometimes seven times a day, seven days a week, rather, working their magic in the garden.
Preparation, until late fall, when preparing for winter, Louise and Frances diligently tend to the gardens. Carlton Lodge is a place of uncommon beauty thanks to Louise and Frances, where residents and visitors alike benefit from the color and life made possible by their stewardship. Not only do Frances and Louise beautify the residence grounds, they mentor a small band of gardening volunteers ranging in age from high school students to older adults and residents of the facility. Their care for the grounds does not end with the summer months either. Both Louise and Frances stay busy during the winter tending to seedlings for the upcoming season as well as the many indoor plants. In addition to their work in the garden, these two were instrumental in the complete reconstruction of the Avery Garden, adding entrance gardens as well as refurbishing
So Frances and I would first of all like to, well, we'd like to thank you, everybody.
the courtyard and chef's garden. Between them, they have logged over 700 hours of work this season alone and will continue
We're very honored to have received this.
in the winter months.
Particularly like to thank the gentleman, a family member, who brought our names forward,
Thank you very much for your contribution to your community, particularly Carlton Lodge.
and to everyone who wrote a letter of support to that suggestion.
I know the residents appreciate the beauty of the garden. Ensemble, elles ont fait plus de 700 heures de travail cette saison seulement.
Needless to say, we were very surprised and flattered when we were informed. We were also a bit uncomfortable at being singled out for this recognition because there
Merci pour tout le travail que vous accomplissez dans votre communauté.
were so many volunteers at Carlton Lodge who were doing such a great job.
And on behalf of councillor Kakish, councillor Egley, and councillor Harder, we'd like
Both of us were family members of residents of the lodge, and we began volunteering as
to present you with the Mayor's City Builder Award for the wonderful work you're doing and making that special place, Carlton Lodge, even more special.
members of the family council. After our loved ones passed away, we found we wanted to stay on.
Congratulations.
We had met so many people, residents, their families, volunteers, and staff members, that we just were very fond of, and we didn't want to give that up. We also wanted to stay on because, well, quite frankly, we were having fun doing what we were doing. And we were getting satisfaction with our projects. And over the years, I must say, we've always received tremendous support from the management team at Carlton Lodge, and that's been extremely motivating. Carlton Lodge is a wonderful home. I find there's a lot of kindness and generosity there, and that's one of the reasons that we'll probably be volunteering for many years to come. Thank you.
Roll call, please, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Consulier Monnet.
Present.
Councillor Middick.
I see.
Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
Councillor Alshantiri.
Present.
Councillor Cadri.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
Here.
Councillor Shirelli.
Here.
Councillor Egley.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Consulier Fleury.
You see.
Councillor Newsbaum.
Here.
Councillor McKenney.
Present.
Councillor Leaper.
You see.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Chernyschenko.
Present.
Consulier Cloutier.
Present.
Consulier Blay.
Here.
Councillor Darousse.
Here.
Councillor Moffatt.
Here.
Councillor Kakish.
Present.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
You see.
You have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
I should point out, our colleague councillor Cadri is signaling the start of the NHL season, when our senators are going to whoop the leaves tonight. Any predictions, councillor?
Since it's the first game of the season, I think the Sens should win by about 5 to 1.
That seems fair. Very reasonable.
Point of privilege there. I take offense to that.
I'd like to call on councillor Fleury, who has a special announcement that we should be very proud of.
Mr. Mayor, I'm holding two plaques that are plaques that we've received at the International Festival Events Association. As you see in the crowd, sitting very hiding behind the column here, we have our famous Guy Leflamme, who's the organizer of Ottawa 2017. On September 27th, we won seven gold at that association recognition and two silvers. Some of them go from best company image piece to best single newspaper display to best single magazine display. So certainly, we're heading into 2017 with a lot of recognition that the efforts and the program is ready.
So it shows how well organized Guy's team and Ottawa 2017 are. So of course, this is not our plaque, it's really Guy's team plaque, the prizes that we got at the International Festival.
Bravo et félicitations, Guy.
Congratulations, Guy, to your team. We are very proud.
Regular and in-camera minutes of the council meeting of the 28th of September 2016. Confirmation pour l'éventual septembre 2016. Carried. Declarations of interest, including those originally arising from prior meetings. Declaration d'intérêt. Received none. Communications as presented. Regrets? No regrets filed to date. Motion to introduce reports. Motion pour la présentation du rapport. Councillor Middick, seconded by councillor Cloutier, please.
Thank you, Mayor. That the report from the Manetteck Mill Quarter Community Development Corporation entitled "Manetteck Mill Quarter Community Development Corporation 2015 Annual Report, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report 20, Finance and Economic Development Committee Report 18, Planning Committee Report 32, and Transportation Committee Report 18" be received and considered, and that pursuant to subsection 35-5 of Procedure by law 2014-441, council receive and consider Planning Committee Report 33.
On the motion, carried. Adoptee. Item number one is the Manetteck Mill Quarter Community Development Corporation Société communitaire de Cartier du Moulet de Manetteck. On the report, carried. Finance and Economic Development Committee Report Number 18. Rapport numéro 18 du Comité de Finance et de Développement économique. Revised 2017-2018 Budget Directions and Strategies. Questions? Okay, come back to that. Planning Committee Report Number 32. Rapport numéro 32 du Comité de l'urbanisme. Zoning Bylaw Amendment 306 Livery Street. Modification du règlement de zonage 306 rue Livery. Carried. Planning Committee Report Number 33. Rapport numéro 33 du Comité de l'urbanisme. Zoning Bylaw Amendment 4005 Strandhurst Drive. Modification du règlement de zonage 4005, promenade Strandhurst. Carried. Transportation Committee Report Number 18. Rapport numéro 18 du Comité des transports. 2017 Municipal Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Plan. Plan de remplacement des véhicules et de l'équipement municipal pour 2017. Hold for a question, please. Bulk Consent Agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the Bulk Consent Agenda? No? On the Bulk Consent Agenda is presented. Carried. Okay, so we'll come back to the first item that was held. Revised 2017-2018 Budget Directions and Strategy. Councillor Newsbaum had a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to staff for this report. It's good news. It's always good news to know that the financial situation has improved somewhat than what was projected just a little bit less than a year ago. Just a couple of questions on some of the revised figures. The first, and I'm looking just for the treasurer's information at the chart on page 14. So the revised revenues user fees for 2017 is 20.5 million, which is more than the 12.5 million as presented in 2016, so I guess what's that 8 million more? And I'm just curious, we know that 3.1 million of that comes from the increased taxation as mentioned on, or not the increased taxation, but the increased money we're getting from the commercial properties, which was mentioned earlier in the report. The amount there was 3.1 million, as noted at the bottom of page eight. So I'm just curious, the remainder, so the difference between...
Councillor, this one, we can't hear you over here. Can you speak louder, please?
Oh, sorry. So I'm just wondering what the remainder of the difference is due to. So the delta between 12.5 and 20.5, we know that 3.1 comes from the commercial properties. I'm wondering if the treasurer can just give us a brief outline of where the remainder of that increased budget line comes from.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. One of the biggest items on there is you approved the increase in the hydro dividend. We're going from 17 million dollars to 20 million dollars next year, so there's an additional 3 million dollars. There's also additional revenue because you hired 12 new paramedics this year, so the provincial funding for that comes in next year, so half of that. There's also a number of other smaller items that together account for that delta of 7.5 million dollars. But those are the two biggest items.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then looking at the one-time funding requirement, which we thought we were going to need at this time last year, the 6.7, which I think was going to be the deferment of the fleet replacement cost. So is that money being booked for 2017, meaning is that money still available for council to consider for various spending priorities? I know that in very good news, the mayor announced an interest in the draft budget in the low-income transit pass. Are these types of ideas or projects or expenditures, would they have access to the 6.7, which we had booked off for the fleet replacement cost?
Mr. Mayor, the 6.7 million is a one-time source, so you wouldn't want to use it for something like your low income, which would be an operating pressure going forward. The 6.7, in fact, has been returned to the fleet reserve and is part of the funds that will be used to purchase the 25 million dollars in fleet replacement next year. So it's actually been returned to the source, as we weren't able to or didn't need it to inject into the budget in 2017.
Okay, so essentially, in terms of the increased taxation, the 3.1 million, that will be, I guess, an ongoing revenue source in the sense that we expect we'll stay beneath the key ratio now, as long as we keep a neutral tax target. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's a base increase, so that is there for all future years.
Okay, that's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, councillor Brockington, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, and good morning, everyone. I will be supporting the recommendation before us. I do believe it's important to provide a framework for these boards in advance. I have no issue with what's before us, but I do have concern and a request that I'd like to make today, and that is, I would like to request through the mayor and for the Police Services Board Chair to take under advisement an opportunity for this council to have a direct dialogue and conversation with the police chief. And if there's an opportunity that we could have before council passes the budget, to have the police chief come to a council meeting and talk about the various priorities, significant priorities in this city, how the resources are being used to address those priorities, how the addition of new officers in 2016 and in 2017 are particularly going towards those issues, I think that would be of great benefit. If you ask any resident in my ward, particularly Carlington, where there have been a number of issues over the last little while about the need for not only police attention, but potential for reallocation of resources, they'd have a lot of comments to provide you. And I think before we pass the budgets in December, Your Worship, there would be great value if council had that opportunity to have that dialogue. I realize I can go to the Police Services Board, I did last year, and I plan to do so again, but that's not the type of fulsome dialogue that I'm looking for. So I've just asked that the mayor and Police Services Board Chair take that under advisement, and if there's an opportunity before we pass the budgets in December for the chief to come here for that dialogue, that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Maybe a comment from the Chair of the Police Board. Councillor Alshantiri's microphone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to my colleague. Mr. Mayor, yes, my colleague did attend last year's our budget meeting, so today it will be the first time our finance audit committee for the Police Board will meet at 1 o'clock, and I would welcome any council or any member of the public who would like to attend. The committee is open to the public. And also, traditionally, we'll have a meeting at the council's lounge, where we invite council for lunch and asking all our staff, senior staff, to ask the council to engage with them on the budget. But I don't believe, Mr. Mayor, having the chief here on council day or budget day is the proper way to have an open dialogue. I think it's got to be on committee level or to the board when we present our budget or when we do a luncheon together with our council colleague, though I believe that would be the proper time to attend and ask any question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor McKenney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, I guess, go backwards a year. At the Committee, Community and Social Services Committee meeting, budget meeting last year, we had several of our agencies attend who had concerns about their rising, you know, their costs that were increasing, and also the number of clients they're seeing continues to increase beyond the 1.5% that we allot to them. So I'm just, just a comment around what I'll be looking for in the budget. I just want to make sure that we identify this year, the pressures on those agencies for their 2017 budget, and also some new and emerging needs. I hear from organizations like Operation Come Home, you know, agencies that don't have funding through the city today that need it, and there's no on-ramp for them. They're left to either fundraise or find other one-time grants, and that can be difficult. So, you know, we have emerging needs in the city. Homeless youth is certainly one of them, and I'm looking forward to seeing that reflected in the Community and Social Services budget. I do have one question, though. Last year, and on that topic, last year, we had hoped to get, I think it was councillor Deans who had brought a motion asking for 250,000 for community funding sustainability, and that was from One Time Unforeseen. With these budget directions today, would that be within order for one of us to bring that motion, asking for that to be considered?
Aren't you asking if it would be in order today or at budget time?
At budget time, yeah.
I believe it was ruled out of order last year, so I would think, I'll ask Mr. Mayor...
The issue of the contingency fund is for contingencies in the new budget year not to dip into. So any member of council, if they wish to find 250,000 dollars out of a 3.2 billion dollar budget, can bring forward an offsetting reduction, and that's permitted.
So as a council, a committee of the whole, when we're sitting at budget time, we don't have the opportunity to take from a fund like One Time Unforeseen if there's a majority vote on that?
You would, as long as it is actually one-time and unforeseen. So as long as it complies with what you actually set as the rules for it, but collectively you could decide to do something else, but it's, I'll rely on the mayor for guidance on that.
I would have a hard time supporting the budget directions if I don't see any way for me as a councillor, when I've got agencies, you know, coming to me and telling me that they're in trouble, having any way of adding to their budget. So, you know, if that's the case, then I will have a hard time supporting these budget directions. Thank you.
Well, I think, just to clarify, councillor, and the treasurer can confirm this, the budget directions were established in the first year of council. This is simply raising from 1.75 to 2% the levy because of the changes with respect to commercial properties catching up, in essence, to residential properties. So you'd be voting against increasing the levy to police, library, and public health. So the whole issue that you're talking about was dealt with two years ago. So this is something a little different because of the, you know, the provincial government had set the cap on industrial and commercial properties, and it's just bringing it up from 1.75 to 2%. So I just want to make sure that you're clear on that, so that, you know, I think what you're concerned about is the 2% tax cap. This is different than that. This is actually raising from 1.75 to 2% new dollars into police, library, and public health. Councillor McKenney's mic, please.
Thank you. Yeah, I am well aware of that. Thank you. I don't believe that I'm voting for or against any budget today. This is just the direction. So I'm, you know, I'm having to consider what the direction is in this report and whether I support it, but thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Councillor Deans, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow up on a couple of questions from my colleagues, I think what councillor McKenney is talking about is process, and we have seen some process issues over the last couple of years that have been troubling to some members of council. So I guess my first question is, if we do have process issues, like the one councillor McKenney raised, and frankly, the one councillor Brockington raised as well, how would we resolve those midterm?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be pleased to go and talk with any of the councillors offline to see what precisely you would like us to do in midterm governance. I don't have an overbroad, overarching response to that, but I would be pleased to look at it.
And would that be in time for the 2017 budget?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, okay, well, that's encouraging, then. Maybe we can work it out. I think the question that councillor Brockington raised about police is a really important one, because I've been sitting in this seat for a long time, and I know that there was a longstanding tradition that the police chief came here when he was asking for, you know, upwards of 300 million dollars from our operating budget, that he would answer at least high-level questions about policing. And it's only been in the last few years that that tradition has ended, and I actually think it has started to create a bit of a gulf between council and the police service. And I think that we need to reverse that trend. I think if you're coming to council and asking for 300 million dollars from our operating budget, you should come and ask for questions. And I appreciate what councillor Alshantiri said about doing a luncheon. A luncheon is not open to the public. It's not a public forum. This is our local government, and the public has every right to hear the conversation and the questions. And so for that reason, I'm looking for, I'm looking for some guarantee that we will not be ruled out of order in asking the police chief questions about the police services budget. So, Mr. O'Connor, I think to you, is there any impediment that would prevent us from doing what we have done for many years in this chamber, questioning the police chief on budget day?
No, Mr. Mayor, there would not be.
Thank you. I'm really happy to hear that, actually. Very happy to hear that. I think those are all my questions for now.
Councillor Leaper, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two areas for questions. The first is with respect to the tax stabilization fund and dipping into that in order to fund some of the efficiencies that we think we can capture this year. If I understand properly, that's a 6.7 million dollar dip into the tax stabilization reserve? Or is it a different number?
Mr. Mayor, it will all depend on what the year-end numbers look like and what actually the costs are that we're going to incur this year, so I can't tell you at this point in time. But I will take what I need from the...
for me as a councillor, when I've got agencies, you know, coming to me and telling me that they're in trouble, having any way of adding to their budget. So, you know, if that's the case, then I will have a hard time supporting this budget directions. Thank you.
Well, I think, just to clarify, councillor, and the Treasurer can confirm this, the budget directions were established in the first year of council. This is simply raising from 1.75% to 2% the levy because of the changes with respect to commercial properties catching up, in essence, to residential properties. So you'd be voting against increasing the levy to police, library and public health. So the whole issue that you're talking about was dealt with two years ago. So this is something a little different because of the change, you know, the provincial government had set the cap on industrial and commercial properties and it's just bringing it up from 1.75% to 2%. So I just want to make sure that you're, you're clear on that. So that, you know, I think what you're concerned about is the, the 2% tax cap. This is different than that. This is actually raising from 1.75% to 2% new dollars into police, library and public health. Counselor McKenney's mic, please.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I am well, well aware of that. Thank you. I don't believe that I'm voting for or against any budget today. This is just the direction. So I'm, you know, I'm having to consider what the direction is in this report and whether, whether I support it. But thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Counselor Deans, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow up on a couple of questions from my colleagues. I think what Counselor McKenney is talking about is process. And we have seen some process issues over the last couple of years that have been troubling to some members of councils. So I guess my first question is, if we do have process issues, like the one Counselor McKenney raised, and frankly, the one Counselor Brockington raised as well, how would we resolve those midterm?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be pleased to go and talk with any of the councillors offline to see what precisely you would like us to do in midterm governance. I don't, I don't have an over broad, overarching response to that, but I would be pleased to look at it.
And would that be in time for the 2017 budget?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, okay. Well, that's encouraging then. Maybe we can work it out. I think the question that Counselor Brockington raised about police is a really important one because I've been sitting in this seat for a long time. And I know that there was a longstanding tradition that the police chief came here when he was asking for, you know, upwards of $300 million from our operating budget, that he would answer at least high-level questions about policing. And it's only been in the last few years that that tradition has ended. And I actually think it has started to create a bit of a gulf between council and the police service. And I think that we need to reverse that trend. I think if you're coming to council and asking for $300 million from our operating budget, you should come and ask for questions. And I appreciate what Counselor Al Shantiri said about doing a luncheon. A luncheon is not open to the public. It's not a public forum. This is our local government and the public has every right to hear the conversation and, and the questions. And so for that reason, I'm looking for, I'm looking for some guarantee that we will not be ruled out of order in asking the police chief questions about the police services budget. So, Mr. O'Connor, I think to you, is there any impediment that would prevent us from doing what we have done for many years in this chamber, questioning the police chief on Budget Day?
No, Mr. Mayor, there would not be.
Thank you. I'm really happy to hear that, actually. Very happy to hear that. I think those are all my questions for now.
Counselor Leeper, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two, two areas for questions. The, the first is with respect to the Tax Stabilization Fund and dipping into that in order to fund some of the efficiencies that we think we can capture this year. If I understand properly, that's a $6.7 million dip into the, the Tax Stabilization Reserve? Or is it a different number?
Mr. Mayor, it will all depend on what the year-end numbers look like and what actually the costs are that we're going to incur this year. So I can't tell you at this point in time. But I will take what I need from that reserve fund in order to basically offset the costs and bring us back into a, a surplus position in 2017, 2016.
Where does that, where does that fund sit now?
The fund sits at, I believe, $6.2 million.
Okay. And, and do we have an indication before we authorize dipping into to take advantage of those efficiency savings, what that ballpark might be? Do you think that the Tax Stabilization Fund would essentially be fully used, half-used, three-quarter used?
Mr. Mayor, in terms of a ballpark for it, at this point in time, I can't say. Because the first thing we will use is any surpluses within the existing budget. And then I will go to the Tax Stabilization Reserve if I need to after that point in time. We were projecting a surplus in the operating budget for 2016. And so that, some of that will be absorbed. I'm anticipating, though, that I will not have to use all of the Tax Stabilization Reserve.
So some of that will be left after, after that exercise?
That's correct.
There are seven different areas listed in the report where we have found efficiencies, found savings. The, the requirement to fund some of those in 2016 in order to take advantage of them. Do you have a notion of which of these areas is likely to create the, the biggest need?
The biggest impact will be from the reorganization that took place last week.
Okay. Thank you. For my, for my second question, I did want to follow up on the, the points that my councillor colleagues have raised as well. With respect to the process, we're passing today a direction to staff. We're not passing the budget today. I want to make sure that we are not binding ourselves to a budget that comes out of the, out of the direction exercise. I want to come back in 2015, I believe, when we were first taking a look at the process. Mr. O'Connor, you had told council that there's a maximum in municipal law that says council is supreme. So we have built into the procedure bylaw to make sure that during the Committee of the Whole process, council can do whatever it deems appropriate. The majority of council can move money, quite frankly, from anywhere to increase the budget, to do anything we need to do to meet whatever you believe at the end of the day is good for the city of Ottawa. We've heard this morning, the Treasurer gave us some, some clarification around one-time and unforeseen has to be one-time and unforeseen. Can you help me reconcile the, you can do whatever you believe is in the good of the city with that? Is there some way we can get some indication of what those hurdles in the process might be moving forward?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. With regards to the comments that I made, they would have been general comments with regards to council's overall ability to increase taxes or decrease taxes and do that. What the Treasurer's comments earlier with regards to the establishment of specific reserve funds, which are done for specific purposes and can only be used for those specific purposes. So the one she had in mind was directed at that answer in particular.
So it's not really from anywhere. Council has, there are a number of silos which we have to respect, then?
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And again, I guess I would ask again this year, just to make sure that we are not binding ourselves to the, the budget direction document that results from this exercise, but that we do have the flexibility to add to the, the tax revenue, for instance, if we need to, in order to provide some of the services that residents are asking us to provide?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Without an offsetting, an offset?
Well, actually, sorry to correct you, Counselor Leeper. We all voted unanimously for, if you, you want to spend a dollar, you got to take a dollar out. So that was a unanimous decision by council. If council wishes to change that policy, they can propose a motion and it will be voted on. But to be very clear, that was what you and every other member of council voted on in our first year of this mandate, to bring that fiscal discipline to the table. And that is the policy that I continue to follow.
So let me get some clarification around that. Because at the same meeting, Counselor Nussbaum asked, so that means that the restriction in the budget of increases in the budget being offset by reductions is actually a restriction on the Committee of the Whole instead of the committee? Is that correct? To which Mr. O'Connor replied, as I've indicated previously, the Committee of the Whole, which is the Committee of the Whole of council, is free to move budgets anywhere. So there is no such restriction on it. So I just want to make sure before I approve a budget direction that seeks a particular tax increase, that I understand that process as well as I can.
Well, I've been very clear that if you, if members of council who voted on that resolution a year and a half ago, it was very clear that if members of council can do any movement within Committee of the Whole, but they have to find an offsetting decrease in funding. So that was what I've ruled and I'm, I continue to abide by the council direction that you and others gave me.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, that doesn't meet with my understanding of the rules of procedure. But obviously, that'll be a discussion we'll need to have during the, the budget, if and when people propose to move money in ways that you consider to be inappropriate.
I think it's important to wait for the budget, to see what's in the budget before we vote against the budget. That seems fair.
Fair enough, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Al Shantiri.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, Mr. Mayor, we, we at the Police Service Board, we follow direction as you requested during the budget. That mean any council member can attend committee where all the budget has been item by item talked about. Under the Police Service Act, it's clearly the, the council, city council can only approve or not the police budget, but not to ask question on the operational or line by line. So I would invite all my colleagues. Today is the first meeting we will have at 1:00. The Richmond Room is open to the public and to the media, who like to attend this meeting. So it's not a secret meeting and it's not a closed-door meeting. It is an open meeting. Traditionally, we have a meeting at the council lounge. We invite our colleagues to meet with staff and ask them direct questions. And that also open for councillor and their staff and the media and the public if they wish to come in. In the past, unfortunately, we have seen not too many councillor attend those events. And that's why we cancel them. But please, any, any discussion on a detail of the budget has to take on the committee based on your request, Mr. Mayor. Because to go on the committee and ask those questions to the committee chair and councillor and staff, that would be the place to go on a detailed item by item with the budget. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Counselor Egley, please.
So my understanding, and I'm looking to the Treasurer, and this probably been said, but I want to be absolutely clear. So for the budget consultations, you did a series of slides for us. I think it was a pie and you, you cut the pieces out of the pie. So as I understand the process, we can be as creative a baker as we want with that pie. So we're constrained by the size of the pie, but we can cut it up however we want to cut it up. So when you come forward with a budget, we can say, I want this slice bigger for that and that slice smaller for this, as long as it all fits within the pie pan. Is that correct?
My interpretation is, is that when you are at committee, yes, the size of the pie doesn't change. You can just slice it differently. That's up to you. When you get to Committee of the Whole, you can in fact increase the pie if you want to increase the tax levy. But as the Mayor has said, he has ruled in the past that you have to continue to abide by the, if you want to add a dollar, you have to take a dollar out. And it would be, would be a motion that would be debated and would have to be voted on and a majority would win as usual.
But at Committee of the Whole, we have a whole bunch of pies. So I can take a slice of apple pie and put it in the blueberry pie. I can put the blueberry pie in the apple pie, correct?
Continuing with the pie analogy, yes. You can make mixed pie.
So we have, we have the power to amend the budget as we see fit, if we have, if we have the majority support. We can, at Committee of the Whole, we can move from one, one budget pie to another budget pie as long as there's support, correct?
With some limitations. You can't move water sewer into any tax...
No, no. And appreciate that, appreciate that.
Within the, within the tax silos that you've got, yes.
So next question. So a lot of focus seems to be on, why can't we use the one-time fund? Which of course, wouldn't require anybody to suggest that taxes go up or to make any kind of a cut, but would create more money. Would it be possible, and I understand your answer, that that could only be used once. And then, so you couldn't fund, for example, a homeless initiative year after year from that, from that fund. But could somebody bring a motion saying, I don't want to have the one-time fund anymore and I want that money distributed in a different way?
Most certainly, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Thank you, councillor. Counselor Shirelli, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Okay. First of all, I think that the dollar in, dollar out doesn't nearly capture all of the elements of the budget. Because we could be looking at changing your assumptions on interest rates. We could be looking at changing your allocation of investments within it. And we could be looking at the size of the debt. And to suggest that we would have to find an offsetting dollar amount for any change in, for example, the debt target, I think is not something we contemplated when we voted on this two years ago. And that motion, while it may preserve the proposed budget that the Mayor brings, it didn't at all ever guarantee fiscal discipline. You know, we more than doubled the budget in just five years. So if that's fiscal discipline, I'm not sure that we want to adhere to it too tightly. Secondly, on the police issue, this, there is nothing in the Police Services Act that prevents members of council asking questions about the police budget at the council forum. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And if you look at what's going on in Toronto, not only does a police chief have to present the budget to councillors, the police chief is actually down there on councillors' row in Toronto lobbying individual councillors and asking individual councillors to give them his questions. And, and all of that's going on before the public forum happens. So it seems strange to me that we would be going the exact opposite direction and saying that it's somehow illegitimate to ask the police chief to sit in front of us, knowing it's an up or down vote, it's yes or no, but to sit in front of us in a public forum and answer questions about the $300 million plus in public money that he's going to be asked to administer. So is it within our purview either now or between, before Budget Day to pass a motion to ask the police chief to appear before us, as the chief has done for decades, except for the time when the deputy chief was here? Is that, is that in order?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right. That's, that's all I need to know right now. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor. So on the report is presented, carried.
Descent.
Descent by Leeper and McKenney. All right. Our next item that was held is the Municipal Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Plan. Counselor Hubley has a question, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. My question for the, the Treasurer on this, just to clarify, the, the attachment with the report of the, the list of the vehicles is the vehicles that we are going to replace and not necessarily replace with the same vehicles, correct?
That's absolutely correct, Mr. Mayor. There's been a fair bit of confusion about this list. We were asked by a reporter why we were buying these particular vehicles. We're not. These are the vehicles that are going to be replaced. We don't know what we're going to get until we go to market.
Right. And I believe last year, there was a report commissioned for On the Fleet as well as an audit report, making some recommendations for this. And I believe here at council, we suggested that we do some sort of a needs analysis on the cars. Like, is this the right car or truck for the job? Do we need to have these upgrades, et cetera? When you go to replace the vehicles on this list, is there now a process in place to do that analysis for council?
Mr. Mayor, we will be bringing forward an IPD to Fedco in November, which is actually going to detail exactly what you're, you're asking about, the results of the Ernst &amp; Young review of our, of the fleet. And they basically looked at best practices and how other municipalities have set this up and how they determine when the replacement is. The implementation of that will be described in that IPD, how we will implement their recommendations with an, an objective as part of, in the Directions report, you saw that we were looking at fleet standards with the objective of reducing both the size and the cost of the fleet. So there'll be a number of strategies identified in there. And we will be working on those over the next probably two to three years to fully implement. But part of that is to go to a standard type of vehicle depending on the types of position and the needs of that particular position. So it's in order to reduce the cost of it to go to, in some cases, smaller vehicles, or in some cases, no vehicle at all, maybe just asking the person to put in mileage claims instead. So that process will be unfolding over the next two to three years. And we'll bring information to that on Fedco for the November meeting.
You, okay. So you just mentioned just the Ernst &amp; Young report. I'm more concerned with the recommendations that came out of the audit report. Are they going to be included in this report that you're talking about too? Because I understood management was going to accept the recommendations that were made in that report.
I believe the recommendations are actually in line with what Ernst &amp; Young is recommending. So yes, they would be adopted as part of that as well.
Can we be certain of that? Like, it doesn't sound like you're, you're certain.
I would have to look at the actual audit report and all of the recommendations. Some of those, I think, are, would be simply responded to in the response to the audit, because they're not maybe directly related to replacement. They may be directed to other things such as processes around fuel dispensing and things like that.
Right. Okay. Thank you. If you could look at that. And I'd encourage my colleagues also to review the audit before we deal with that report at Fedco next month. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Hubley. Counselor Harder, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question. I just, for the life of me, can't remember right now. And over all the years, I'm wondering, do we, as do the police, work with a, a large buying body? So for example, when we're looking at best prices for all of our fleet, do we work with biggest cities in Ontario, that sort of thing? Or, or Ontario and Quebec? I mean, do we have that kind of relationship? Or we solely negotiate ourselves?
It all depends on the type of vehicle that we're purchasing. The province of Ontario has already gone out to the market and has standing offers for certain types of vehicles. We can in fact purchase off that list. We do like to, especially for light fleet, we like to make certain that the business goes local. So we do tend to go out to the market for those types of things because they're not particularly unique. But ambulances, for example, there's, there is a process in the province for purchasing those, fire trucks, et cetera. So where possible, we already use procurement methods that have already been established and take advantage of those.
Well, I like the local aspect of it for the smaller vehicles. But we don't do that at the expense of greater savings.
We can't, when we go out to tender, anybody can respond to it. The problem would be, though, if you had a dealership, for example, in Toronto, to bring the vehicles up, they would lose all their profits. So you'll mostly get dealerships in the Autogatna area who will be responding to those types of, of tender requests. And it is not solely based on price as well. We look at total cost of ownership. So we look at the type of vehicle, what's its fuel consumption, what's its sort of maintenance history? Do, is this a new vehicle? Does that mean new parts have to be stocked? All those types of things are included in that analysis of the winning bid.
So are we sure then? I mean, I could get the FOB costs, for example, if you're talking Toronto or Windsor or something like that. Anybody doesn't know that means freight on board that would bring the product here. Then of course, there's the maintenance contracts and that that might be better if it's local and that sort of thing. But I would really want to know whether, if we were buying from a, a larger pool on, for example, bylaw vehicles. I don't see that that would preclude us from having the local Toyota, Chevy, whatever. I mean, if that could be part of the consideration. If it, if it can't be part of the consideration, then, then I, you know, I, I'd like to know that.
It actually can't be part of the consideration. It's the same question that we get when we're asked, can we keep the snowplow drivers local to Ottawa and not to the other side of the river? And your procurement law basically says you cannot put those types of geographic restrictions on. The only one who can basically is, the government of Canada can put a made-in-Canada requirement on when they do procurement. But for the rest of us, that would be considered discriminatory.
So, just last question, Mr. Mayor. So the procurement bylaw that we approved, how long ago has that been refreshed? It's not that long. It's not that long, I don't think.
We refresh the procurement bylaw on a regular basis, but it's not the procurement bylaw that prohibits you from that. It's actually anti, I think it's provincial legislation that requires that we cannot put geographic limitations on where we purchase from.
Which is why we've never been successful as the only city in Ontario of any size that has the influence from the Quebec, the province of Quebec, in our dealings with construction workers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That same, and that would be federal direction or provincial? Or both?
I believe it's provincial legislation that prohibits us from putting those types of restrictions on.
Yeah, I think that that's something that I know I'd like to revisit. I hear that a lot in my area of the city where people talk about that, in a number of ways. And I think that Ottawa is unique and possibly, you know, it's something I think that we should have information on to see whether we want to make a change, or want to be given the provision. That really is unique to Ottawa as across the river from Gatineau. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. On the report, received. Motion to adopt reports. Councillor Medick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. That the report from the Manitick Mill Quarter Community Development Corporation entitled "Manitick Mill Quarter Community Development Corporation 2015 Annual Report Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee Report 20, Finance and Economic Development Committee Report 18, Planning Committee Reports 32 and 33, and Transportation Committee Report 18 be received and adopted as amended."
Carried. Motions of which notice have been previously given. Moved by councillor El Shantiri, seconded by councillor Moffett. I think we can probably go to the, therefore be it resolved. These are all on the FIT program. Councillor El Shantiri, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you can see, I believe we have four of those motions, and they're all in the FIT program. And therefore be it resolved that council approve the update municipal council support resolution contained in Appendix A, worded in accordance with the IESOS, predictable template valid for one year. And also, therefore be it resolved that council of the city of Ottawa support the construction and the operation of the project anywhere in the city of Ottawa. Therefore be it resolved that the resolution's sole purpose is to enable the participant in the FIT program to receive priority points on the FIT program, and may not be used for a purpose of any other form of municipal approval in relation to the application or project, or for any other purpose. And there further resolved that this resolution shall expire 12 months after adoption by council. And Mr. Mayor, all four motions is, basically is the same unless--
Okay, so we'll just deal with one at a time. So on that motion, carried. And then the second one deals with Kinburn Side Road.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and--
I think it's the same whereas, so we'll just vote on the Kinburn Side Road. Carried.
Okay.
The next one is 9500 Carlton Corner Lane. Carried. And the next one is, this one is a little different, I believe.
One of them in Ashton Ward 21.
Well, this is a ground-mounted one. So on this one, which is ground-mounted, which is moved by councillor El Shantiri, seconded by councillor Moffett. Carried.
And, Mr. Mayor, since we also have one notice of motion, I'm not sure if my call went away with the rules. I know it doesn't, we don't need to rush it, but I mean, just--
Yeah, that one's under notice of motion, councillor. We'll get to that one shortly. Thank you. So the next motion we have, and it's a revised motion, is moved by councillor Wilkinson, seconded by councillor Hubley, on autonomous and driverless cars. Councillor Wilkinson, please, on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't go through all the whereas, I think it gives the background of this. I think most members of council are aware that we have a lot of high-tech companies in Ottawa, and some of these are very much involved with the autonomous vehicles and developing driverless cars. And I believe you were out to actually see QNX recently and saw what they're doing there, which is quite outstanding. They've told me they're in up to 90% of the world's cars. You just don't see it because it's in the internal E-ing, and they told me they're trying to make sure that they have something that gets marked on the car so people know they exist, because it is a real jewel in Ottawa for-- So because of this developing industry, this one is to improve our economic development by supporting actions to do with this whole technology. So the results are that city council directs staff to report back in Q2, 2017, on the process of establishing in Ottawa a center of excellence for autonomous vehicles, working in collaboration with Invest Ottawa, the Innovation Centre at Bayview, local post-secondary institutions, business partners such as QNX-- Sorry, I got-- The Canadian Automated Vehicle Center of Excellence, the province of Ontario and the government of Canada, with the objective of creating a national software hub for autonomous vehicles within the city of Ottawa. And the city of Ottawa requests the province of Ottawa to cooperate with the city of Ottawa in approving testing of autonomous and driverless cars on public roads in Ottawa, commencing with those in the Canadian North Business Park. I would suggest that, you know, that sometimes if you ever have an opportunity to see some of these industries and the work that they're doing, it's, we may be able to arrange an open house sometime with QNX. These companies tend to not be always very open, because what they're doing is highly confidential, and they have to be very careful about what they let out into the open. We do know there are other companies in Ottawa right now trying to hire people away from Ottawa to go and work in California and other places, because the expertise here is so good. So if you are interested, let me know, and I'll see what I can do with QNX to see if we can get something there. There will be another, some other meetings going up. I've also talked with the Conference Board of Canada, which has got a section working on this, so they are willing to support us in this endeavor as well. So I think it's something where we can support the industry, but the industry is the prime in leading the charge. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councillor Leaper, please.
Thank you. And I do want to make sure that when staff come back, that they take this direction, not as a direction that the city should necessarily play a financial role in establishing a center of excellence. If they want to come back with recommendations, that there should be some financial participation, that there's a good business case that is behind that and supporting it. Municipalities aren't necessarily the best judges of picking market winners and losers. So participation with respect to, you know, how can we leverage some of our networks? How can we leverage what we have going on at the Innovation Centre? But I would hope that staff don't take this as direction to suggest how the city might financially participate without building the business case behind it.
Great, thank you. On the motion, carried. Adoptee. Merci. Motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. Councillor Brockington, seconded by myself. On suspension of the rules. Carried. Councillor Brockington.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll just read into the public record the actual motion and then a brief introduction. This is regarding Haitian relief efforts. Whereas earlier this month Hurricane Matthew caused extensive damage and fatalities from Haiti to the United States, whereas Haiti was the hardest hit, with over 1,000 people killed and as many cities and towns, particularly on the western half of the nation, devastated. Whereas Haiti was still rebuilding from the 2010 earthquake that claimed over 200,000 lives and completely destroyed municipalities as well as key infrastructure. Whereas the threat of disease, starvation, and economic ruin are very real, therefore be it resolved that Ottawa City Council extend its sincere sympathies to those affected by Hurricane Matthew and encourage residents and businesses in Ottawa to donate to a charity of their choice that is committed to providing immediate care and assistance to the Haitian people, including but not limited to the Canadian Red Cross, Oxfam, and Food for the Poor. If I may go right into introductions, Your Worship. The images that we've seen in the news are devastating. The Haitian government has limited resources to address the urgent needs of its people, particularly after the number of natural disasters and political unrest that have plagued this nation for some time. There's an immediate need for food, water, shelter, medicine, basic supplies, and the threat of disease is particularly real. There was a cholera outbreak after the earthquake, and again, they're reporting that this could be a case again. What's different from the earthquake is that the earthquake didn't destroy crops or farmland, but a hurricane did. And so the food source that the Haitian people were trying to rely on has now been decimated. And so there's a worry that the impact on the people could be worse now, even though much fewer lives were lost. So, Your Worship and members of council, the Haitian ambassador on his website, the Haitian ambassador to Canada acknowledges the work of the Canadian Red Cross, Oxfam, and Food for the Poor, but there are a number of charities and NGOs that work directly with Haiti that the citizens of Ottawa or businesses can be guided by their conscience to donate to. So this is simply acknowledging the devastation that's happened, and we pass along our sympathies to the Haitian people and encourage the people of Ottawa, through whatever means that they can, to provide support through a contribution to a charity. So I'd ask that council support this motion. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, councillor Brockington. On the motion, carried. Are there any other motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure? Notices of motion for consideration at subsequent meeting. Councillor El Shantiri and councillor Moffett, please. Councillor El Shantiri.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, another one of those, the municipal council support resolution blanket for the FIT program, just a notice of motion.
Okay, we'll deal with that at the next meeting. Thank you, councillor El Shantiri. The next notice of motion we have is by councillor Tierney, seconded by councillor Chernyschenko. Councillor Tierney, please.
Yes, it's in front of you as well, Mr. Mayor. It relates to the FIT program as well, and I just want to make a quick note. Many of us in our ward have something that we don't celebrate as much. Jody has a jail, Chad has a dump, I got ROPAC. And I think this FIT motion is something that we can celebrate. We've talked about combined sewage overflow, and now we're talking about possibly harnessing the power of poop. So I think this is all good news, and I look forward to this coming to the next meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, councillor. Are there any other notices of motion for consideration at subsequent meeting? Okay. Motion to introduce bylaws. Consigliere Medick, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you, Mayor. That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
Confirmation bylaw? Councillor Medick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of October 12, 2016.
Carried. We have two inquiries. Councillor Hubley, is your inquiry still? You've received an answer, I believe?
I've already got the answer, Mr. Mayor, so yes, I will draw the inquiry. Thank you.
Thank you. Second written inquiry, councillor Neusbaum, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An inquiry, I believe, directed at the city clerk arising from the discussion this morning. The inquiry is, during city council's deliberations in committee of the whole on the annual city of Ottawa budget, is there any procedural or legal constraint to council, meeting in committee of the whole, voting on changes via motions to the draft budget, which would, if approved, result in A, an increase or decrease to the tax rate above or below 2%, and B, a reallocation of funds from any reserve operating fund, including one-time unforeseen, to a different operating budget line item? And if we could have that response before November 9, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Adjournment? Councillor Medick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. That the proceedings of the city council meeting of October 12, 2016 be adjourned.
Motion carried. Adoptee. Merci. Thank you.